Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks everyone. We are here on March 5th at 11:00 AM for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We'll just dive right in. If people could just make sure their phones are silent, including myself. And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then review the agenda.
I don't have any changes.
I don't have any changes on new items. I did wonder, did we have a clean version of the minutes on the 7th?
Yeah, I sent you guys a new update in.
Alright, sorry, I just pulled it from the tease.
I think there's a consent, like in the packet, there's a consent to turn the file that has the minutes in it.
Okay, alright, great, thanks. What's my other question? That works?
I guess, Tim, I didn't see anything in the packet for eight. Are we good to go on the, that's the budget request for the annex?
Yeah.
Are we, we're good to go on that as well?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Then I think I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Great.
No further discussion?
So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the agenda is approved as posted. You can go into community items. I don't have anything. I do see some of our legislative team on, so.
Yeah, we did most, we said, kind of do those at the beginning of the meeting for any questions you have, clarifications, legislative update items from the, from last week's bill tracker, or if you had questions on construction defects, or if they have any questions also for us.
Yeah, I didn't have any, I have to admit, I'm a little behind on catching up on legislative stuff, but I haven't, like, weighed in with any testimony or lobbying myself. I mean, Tim, do your, I don't know, if Sarah, Brock, do you have any, like, pressing questions for us that we could kind of answer on the fly?
I mean, not pressing, we just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on where we stand in the session, and briefly discuss a couple bills, just to give you an update. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, great. So, we're almost halfway through session, which is really exciting. Also terrifying that we have so much more time left. It's been relatively uneventful in terms of the, kind of, internal politics at the, at the Capitol, but there was a threat last week to start working on the weekends, to get through their, their busy calendar, so we'll see how that, how that goes. The budget is a big topic down here as well. The general, they passed all supplementals in order to be closer to close out the budget. We're now at about $42 billion. So the, the budget will start in the House this year, and likely to start the week of the 25th. That is important to note because other legislative activity will stop in the House as they discuss the budget. So things on our agenda may slow down a little bit in terms of that, in the House that week. For bills we wanted to talk about, there's been a few that we've identified as the priority legislation. So one of those was House Bill 1275. That's the sunset of the underfunded courthouse commission. We've had some, from you all, some suggested language. This, the drafter had said it was a bit outside of the scope of the bill, but we spoke with the sponsor and she said she'd be willing to consider that for next year. So it's something that we can think about in future efforts if we'd like to help change, restructure the timeline for the grant application, so it works a bit better for counties. The other one we wanted to provide an update on is Senate Bill 33, that's the lodging property tax bill. That's the one where the, the property tax, I guess, kicks up after, if people, I can't remember the 90 days, sorry.
Oh yeah, yeah, the, for short-term rentals.
For short-term rentals, thank you, sorry, I had a brain freeze there. So, we had recommended to you all that we follow CCI's lead on an amend strategy to that bill. And we're just curious if you had any questions on that, but just seems like it'd be best to go with the group and follow their lead.
Yeah, I think that still, I think that still makes sense, and we can also, I think we maybe have, like, closer views with some of the CCAT folks. So I'll check in, like, this week and see
Yeah.
where some of the counties that are more affected are, are standing.
Okay, that'd be great, we can do that as well.
Is that the 90 days to the 180?
Yeah. And I think one of the other discussion items, I don't know where that stands, like, is, like, if there's going to be a research component, or like, an actual mandate for policy recommendations for a bill next year.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's the goal now, is to, like, let's look at all the, let's look at all the things before, like, what is the inventory? Where are the most rentals and all of that, and study that before they impose something like that, I think is where folks are leaning right now. I don't know about the legislature, but I'm, but CCI.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I don't know where Sarah and Kayla said, but for me, I think something to sort of throw, keep throwing in the mix is, like, let's not just have, like, data, let's actually have some kind of mandate for legislative recommendations, you know, out of the study.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, but just so easy, just so it's not like, oh, next year, it's like, we'll study it again for actual policy.
Okay, just making a note.
Yeah.
The other one on our list was House Bill 1316, that's the middle income tax credit. That was one that we support. That bill has been assigned to finance and has not been calendared yet, but we've been asked to add our name to a fact sheet. And we're curious if that was something that you, the, the board would like to consider. A supportive fact sheet.
Yeah, who, who's running the fact sheet?
Can you remind me?
It's Chaffa.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think we're open to that, like, I, if you want to forward that, we'll make sure to take a look.
Great.
How fast is that moving? Do you, like, is that, like, a 24-hour kind of thing, or?
It's not been calendared yet, well, as of yesterday, so I had to check again today, but it's been a little bit, maybe not this week, but.
Great.
Okay. The last one on our list, we had sent this an email, but just wanted to highlight that Senate Bill 58, the landowner liability recreational use warning sign bill, has passed both chambers. It needs to be signed by the Senate President and the Speaker before it goes to the Governor's desk, but we expect that to happen pretty soon. So, really good news on that one.
Nice, yeah.
And I don't know, anyone, Erin or Brock, if there's anything else, I think these were the ones that we wanted to make sure we touched base with you on. I don't know if the lobby team or if the board has any other things we'd like to discuss.
No, I think that wrapped it up for us.
I think the only, we had talked about, the only one, the wildfire bill, because I can't remember that one. And then Commissioner Pope from Summit County had reached out about some of the construction defect legislation starting. I don't really know that it impacts our housing stock, but those two items.
I forwarded that to Ann and Chapin at the city to see if they had any strong feelings, because I, I haven't.
I haven't either, I didn't look at that either. I did, I did ask.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you guys do on that, especially in the construction defects, a lot of that is just getting started, to Tim's point. And some of those are beginning in committee, so if you guys do get feedback, I think there, there's, to Sarah's point, we're halfway through, but that, that's still a lot of time, and I don't think that they're going to rush these, but if you guys do have feedback on some of those construction defect, defects bills, bills, let us know and, and we can plug in and get you more of a, a robust summary of where those are at and how they're moving. But they are just now getting started.
Okay, on the wildfire side, I spoke with some of our Forest Health Council land managers and Chief of County Commissioners, and they are not supporting the language in the legislative, the legislation right now. It's a bit of an overreach and just also an administrative burden.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you all have other thoughts or questions on that.
I know that Chapie is test finding today in opposition to it.
And for you guys, so that's House Bill 1300. So I think we would take an opposed position as well.
Okay, great. We can get to work on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure the construction defects bills are on your tracker and just try to get a little more intel for the next meeting or for Friday updates.
Okay, that'd be great.
Cool. Great, thanks Sarah and Brock.
Yeah, thanks you guys.
We'll keep trying to do our homework.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you guys, have a good day.
You as well.
Okay. Commissioner Marcel, do you have any other updates?
Um, no, not at this time.
Um, I have, quick, yeah, I'm heading down to La Hanta for the water, Arkansas River Water Forum this week, and we'll, I'll be bringing Bryce Erlich, our CPD staff, Deputy and Water Resource Manager with me, so that'll be great. Good, good, just annual event, and we'll be chatting with some folks on, on some of the land conservation conversations that we've been having, and development pressure. And then our staff is heading to, what's the actual?
Community Builders.
What's the, what's the, I, yeah, so I, yeah, Community Builders. It's been a long time coming, so I'm very excited about seeing this happen, and
Building better places.
Building better places, excellent.
It'll be out for three days.
Yeah, a lot of leadership staff will be out for three days. But that's very exciting, that's, that's going to be good. I participated in a smaller subgroup of that around transportation in 2014, and it spurred a lot of good
Yeah.
kind of common ground and language and conversation and inspiration around a long-term plan and strategy. So, thanks to Ann for making that happen.
It'll be really good to have that as a segue into comp plan provisions. I do have one announcement, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Parks and Wildlife will be holding a hunter's education course at the public library this weekend. You can register at CPW's website. It'll be Saturday and Sunday.
Great, okay. Great. Not seeing anyone for public comment, but this is the moment for public comment, for anyone in the room or on screen. And these are for, for items not on the agenda.
I don't have anybody else in here soon.
Okay, I am not seeing anything, so we can move on to agenda item number one. Discussion of a PSA with Rocky Mountain Family Practice of Leadville to provide non-emergency and urgent medical guidance for patient care to the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and, sure.
Speckman is here, so floor is yours.
Alright, good morning. Yeah, we're finding this is kind of a hole in our intentions side right now, where we have emergency needs for detainees or those that we're in process, and we go to the hospital, or we're transporting out of county, and there's involved, and some sort of involvement in a crash or substance, and we should get medical plans. We'll still need to do that. However, though, as we become a little more stable and we're holding a little longer, you know, using 48 hours, so people can see the judge, and then also we recently had a situation where somebody had COVID, we kept them isolated, in our jail for five days. And so what this is exposing is that we have some of these non-emergent medical type of situations that we have to work through. So, had some conversations with Dr. Lisa from Rocky Mountain, and this is something she's done in the past, and was able to provide these scopes of services, how she can help us handle those situations better. And they are specifically for non-emergent type of situations. And, and, and she gives a timeframe that she's comfortable working with. And this was, so this would be basically, our staff can reach out to her, work through these types of issues, like colds or flu symptoms, diabetes, things like that. Or if they come in with medication that we're not sure how to go through the administration process of the medication, that she can assist us with those calls. So this, this presents a flat rate fee of $400 a month, that includes eight contacts, and with a quarterly review to see how that's going. Do we need more, do we need less, and basically how that lands is basically two contacts for every hundred, a hundred dollars. I do think the $400 would suffice at this point, I don't see it going more than that, but we will analyze that as, as we go through the process. One additional thing that this will also provide to us is training, so Dr. Lisa's going to come in and provide training to our staff. Just, you know, how to contact her, when to contact her, and just be able to handle certain situations themselves without having to contact her, so we can kind of reduce that too. So, I, I think this is a pretty good deal here for us to fill that gap, and then also we're bringing in experience. You know, Dr. Lisa's helped us out, and we actually had an operation in jail, so she's not unfamiliar with the process.
The other thing too, that I'd offer along that too, is that it also, instead of having to take these folks to the emergency room or that type of thing, it's freeing up the resources that we're using at the hospital at a much lower cost to the community.
I was going to say the same thing, it's going to cut into the year bill that we get every month, so.
Big time, so.
And for me, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to mention that also, but it's also a safety thing. You know, we bring those, we bring people down the stairs, out to the car, putting handcuffs, and throughout the winter time, you know, like, that's just an unsafe environment that we can reduce quite a bit. So, thank, thanks.
So, so as part of the services, would Dr. Lisa also be able to come in and see patients in person? So it's not just like a phone contact, it's actual in-person?
She's willing to do both.
Yeah.
We realized that there's certain limitations with equipment, she can bring, you know, so if there's equipment needs at the hospital, we still have to do the transport to a hospital.
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Any questions?
I do not have any question. Ed, this is all, we don't need to approve it pending legal review?
Yeah, it's ready.
Great.
Yeah, I believe we, she came in the sun yesterday, I think I've got a revised version. We have one, one correction on the Exeter Bay Scoping Services this morning, but I think she's, yeah, if I can just get that out.
Alright, great.
We'll get you guys.
With that, I'll move to approve the professional services agreement with Rocky Mountain Family Practice of Leadville PC to provide a non-emergent and urgent medical guidance for patient care to the Lake County Sheriff's Office.
A second?
Great. Any final comments or?
Just to thank you to Dr. Lisa and everybody for trying to figure that out, Dr. Lisa's always offering her support, and we appreciate that, and appreciate you organizing that, coordinating it, Sherona.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. PSA with Rocky Mountain Family Practice of Leadville is approved. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, please.
Agenda item number two, discussion and consideration of the ratification of the July 1st to December 31st, schedule of receipts and dispersments from the Lake County Treasurer, and DJ Romero.
So it's just what we provide to you guys, the semi, which is also known as the semi-annual financial statement, that we run to you guys, it's pretty much just showing the beginning balances of each fund, any current, like, what taxes, anything that's collected within that time period, any transfers in and out, withdrawals, cash dispersments, transfers, treasures feed, and then it shows the balance at the end of that period. It's just the July through December 23 period, semi-annual, it is going to be published in this week's paper, I believe. We also are going to start putting it on our website, the treasurer's website, posting it once you guys approve and ratify that. It'll be on our website as well, like other treasurers, other counties do, we'll have it posted on there as well. It's just something special that you guys have to approve.
No questions for me?
Yeah.
Me either.
Alright, I'll approve the ratification of the July 1st through December 31st of 2023, schedule of receipts and dispersments from the Lake County Treasurer.
A second?
Great. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. The schedule of receipts and dispersments is approved. Thanks.
Thanks, DJ.
Okay, agenda item number three, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Bridge to Home LLC for foster care services led by Kara Roden.
Yes, hi, I'm Kara Roden, it's nice to meet you all. I'm with Child Welfare and Adult Protection Services, I'm the manager. And so, for this request, this is through the Interstate Compact for the Placement of Children, I'm not certain if you're familiar with that. But it is an agreement that each state makes with all of our states and US territories to ensure a safe placement for the children from ascending state to a receiving state. And in this case, we're the receiving state, so we must complete a home study. It's a specialized home study, the safe training, or safe home study. And then, we also reach out to a provider so that they can license the potential resource for foster care, so that that allows for the child to be, have financial and legal responsibility through this sending state, which in this case is New Jersey. And so I reached out to quite a number of child placing agencies, and they do not service our area, because we are here in Lake County, you know, most of them are on the Front Range or on the Grand Junction side. And so I was lucky enough to get in touch with a Bridge to Home Debbie Merrick, and she's willing to do this for us, for $3,500 for the home study. She doesn't, not, she does, that does include the travel, so there are no travel expenses. The only reason why the home study wouldn't be approved is if there is a background disqualification, and so then the home study would be completed at that point, and the resource we would send back that they are not qualified for placement. But this is what we are asking for, and then if the home is approved, she will make monthly visits to the home while the child is placed here in the state of Colorado. And there is a charge for that, but we will come to that once we determine whether there is a home study that is approved. And it, in the communications that she sent, she did provide the different, different rates for the month of services, yes.
I don't have any questions.
I had some, I could just, I mean, for education, so, so is this, this isn't, this doesn't work through, there's not like a standing agreement among all states? This is like on a case-by-case basis, that like a study like this is done, and?
So this is a, this is a federal thing, so yes. It's just that, yes, the Interstate Compact, it's just that here in Leadville, Lake County, we are a small county with small resources, and so we do not, as far as foster care goes, and so we do not have the, like, as a large
We don't have some retainer to do that kind of work, because there's that kind of volume, there's not that kind of volume.
Thank you, because this is the first one we've had in probably a year.
Yeah.
If not longer.
Yeah.
Yes, it is good, in a sense.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yes.
No, always, it's always good to tell us more, every time you're on any of them, it's good to, yeah, remind everybody. Okay, I'll move to approve the professional service agreement with Bridge to Home LLC for foster care services to Lake County Human Services.
A second?
Okay, any final comments or questions?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the PSA with Bridge to Home LLC for foster care services is approved.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just, I don't think we have the, the provider's signature on the PSA yet, so we just get that processed and bring it back to you for signature after we get that.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like me to reach out to her, or, because I don't know that I have hers, her PSA? Okay, so shall I take it, or?
I can email it to you, so you can get it to her.
Okay, that would be wonderful, thank you.
I just didn't know if you'd already had it with her and had a signature.
Not yet, no.
Okay, so we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Great, thanks.
I'm on the agenda next.
Oh, yeah, nice, just getting there. So moving on to agenda, agenda item number four, a discussion and consideration of a PSA with Victor H. Cordero, a PSYDPC for single case bilingual assessment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We are very excited to find this resource, he is bilingual, so that is a huge win for us. And he is a clinical psychologist, and he deals in safety and risk assessments. We researched six therapeutic providers and our current contracted provider, Dr. Russell, but she does not do risk and safety, well, risk crisis assessments. So, we are able to use Dr. Cordero, and he is going to provide us a safety and risk assessment as the court had requested or ordered that be done, because we have a 15-year-old youth that we would like to assess his risk and safety to the community and school. We are also going to discuss with this provider another referral that has been requested by the court for a psychological, but today we are here for the safety and risk assessment, which is going to be wonderful, that he will be able to provide it if it's approved.
Okay. And again, that's, that's, this is, this is a retainer service, or this is just for that one instance?
This will be just for that one. Perhaps in the future, we might look to retain him for further services, but this again is another unique scenario where we don't necessarily have this situation happen all the time. I've had two youth in conflicts in the last year, so it's not a routine thing that we experience a lot.
My suggestion would be we'll quickly PSA in place, and then as the need comes up, they can do amendments to the existing PSA just to cover the cases as they come along.
Okay.
And it sounds like you've reviewed it, so we're good on legal?
Yes, and this one is signed by Dr. Cordero, so it is ready.
Great.
Move to the professional service agreement with Victor H. Cordero, PSYDPC for a single case bilingual assessment.
A second?
Great.
No further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. PSA with Victor Cordero is approved.
Excellent, thank you all.
Thank you.
We're all pretty viewed, very.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks Kara.
Have a good day.
Okay. Agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of a purchase order with Applied Tech for a server memory upgrade.
Yeah, I can take that one, so.
Great.
As we continue our upgrades with our servers, everything, we learn more and more. But this is for, for one of the new servers, upgrading the memory on that, so there'll be expanded memory, and then enhanced protections on that, that's for $3,179. We didn't budget for it, so that's why we're coming, coming to you guys.
This is just for one of the new servers?
It should cover all the upgrades that are happening.
Okay.
Yeah.
When you say not budgeted, it wasn't like specifically called out in the budget, but we don't need to do a supplemental?
Correct, yeah, yeah, we still have funds in IT to, to cover it, but we just didn't plan, we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, wasn't.
I want to be transparent.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you.
Cool.
I will make a motion that we approve the purchase order with Applied Tech for server memory upgrade.
Second?
Okay, any other question?
No, thanks.
No, none for me, thank you.
Uh, okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye? Sorry, sorry, yeah, okay.
Aye.
Uh, great, purchase order with Applied Tech for a server memory upgrade is approved. Uh, agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of the ratification of the Stericycle Contract with Public Health for Biohazard Waste Disposal.
Um, sure, so, Public Health has biohazard waste disposal, we have been partnering with the care clinic, but they, they do a lot more things, there's, there's filled up really, it's just like a 55-gallon drum, you basically. So, this is a separate one for Public Health, and it'll be picked up once a quarter.
Okay. This doesn't seem new to me, I don't know if we've paid them for this before.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll approve the ratification of the Stericycle Contract with Public Health for Biohazard Waste Disposal. A second?
Okay.
No more discussion, please.
Uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The Stericycle Contract with Public Health for Biohazard Waste Disposal is approved. Uh, agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a revised engagement letter with Davis Graham and Stubbs, LLP for Legal Services.
And so this is for Melanie Greenberg's new firm, when she joined the firm, discovered that a couple of her colleagues represent a couple of the mining companies in our community, Peckway and Newmont, and so this is essentially the revision to the engagement letter.
And so this is essentially the revision to the engagement letter you previously approved for her, just to acknowledge those potential conflicts. We don't, there aren't any current conflicts, but just in case there were to develop one between the county and one of these mining companies. Just an acknowledgement that they would not be able to represent the county in regards to those matters. So it's just a revision of the engagement letter for that.
Okay.
Okay.
And sorry, just a clarification, as I read, is it, is it that there are other attorneys in that firm?
Yeah, not, yeah, it's not Melanie, it, yeah, it's the, a couple of other attorneys in the firm that represent those entities.
Yeah.
And so the conflict wouldn't be of Melanie's, it's just noting the, or wouldn't?
Well, it unfortunately transfers to her because she's a part of that firm, so, yeah. Unfortunately, it would, would come with her out indirectly, but she, she doesn't represent any, either of those entities.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that being an issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good to be transparent?
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we approve the revised engagement letter with Davis Graham and Stubbs, L L P for legal services.
Second.
Okay, we're good, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so approve the revised engagement letter. Uh, okay, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of a budget reappropriation request to support the annex for mediation and renovation.
Sure, I'm sorry, I didn't have anything in the packet for you or dollar amount on the agenda.
This is in an email this morning, when she's out sick today, she said she thinks the total is one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Which includes ninety thousand dollars for the first round of K W, or thirteen thousand dollars for carpet. Forty thousand dollars for furniture and fifteen thousand dollars for lighting.
Yes, so we have been using my contingency fund in the manager's office. So I would like to ask for a hundred and fifty thousand to cover that overage and then to, to add it to my contingency. So I would, looking for general approval today, if you are alright with that. And then quarterly, what Stephanie and Jessra are working on, so we'll do quarterly budget amendments or supplementals. So it's not like a massive one at the end and trying to track what we've done all year. And now that it's the third month of the year, I can spend my entire contingency budget. But the annex, the annex should be done hopefully by the second week in April. So everything in there, the mold is remediated. There will be new lights, the lights were original from nineteen seventy-eight, so we'll have new lights in there, new carpet, everything, new furniture for staff. So it'll be a great workspace.
And sorry, the one, you're asking for one fifty?
Yes.
Not the one sixty, okay.
Cause I'll, I'll use my contingency for that, it just went a little.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Yes, yes.
And, sorry, are those, are those like estimates, are they actual like bids and like? Long shot for that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with that question.
So everything from, everything from K W should, should be good now. So everything there should be good, the furniture cost is firm, the lights, or the carpet is firm as well, that was the bid. And then the lights, we did receive a bid amount from K W.
Okay.
To upgrade the bold fluorescent to LEDs.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have any questions on that.
No, I'll move to approve the reappropriation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. From the general fund, general fund to.
Yes.
Manager's contingency fund to support the annex remediation and renovation.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, appropriation request is approved.
Can I get you to repeat that part about the move to the?
From, to, to reappropriate a hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund to the manager's contingency fund?
Is it fifty or sixty?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
Fifty, is it? Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah, I'm from.
Okay, moving on to the items in the consent agenda. Do you want to take a?
I need to, yeah.
I did see, did you need a clean copy of the seventh meeting minutes or?
I see the clean copy, but now I, I just needed to back, bounce back and forth, because all that I found in the minutes folder, didn't look in. I still have one minutes folder. Um, Hunter, did you, anything that? Stood out with the? With the motion on like Adam Bay's authority?
No, um, so when I re-listened to it, it was to just give him permission to sign.
So just due authorization?
Yeah, just authorization.
Not the, like an interim, something like that, okay, I apologize, I'm having difficulty bouncing back and forth between these here. Okay, so you corrected that piece, and then, oh yeah, the public, I think the other big ones were whether or not the public input. And comment portions were open?
So I did put those in there, because some of them I did just simply state no public comment, and so then I did say opened, none was given, then closed.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, I think that wore that.
And I did update the planning commissions one to include the amendment to the two pieces that you guys wanted.
That we did in addition to that, recommended, excellent, okay, thank you so much, that was why, alright.
I did, I just caught like one, like super tiny typo, actually on you, like your name is Deputy Clerk to the Board, it should probably be capital D for Board.
It looked good though.
Yeah.
The full manager?
Yep.
Um, alright.
Actually, I mean, while we're, yeah, I mean, for me, like, I think this level of detail for minutes is like really, like, kinda spot on. Like, it's enough, so you really know what's, and sometimes they're like really short and cryptic.
Right.
And sometimes they're like transcript, this is, to me, this is a really good middle ground.
Awesome, thank you.
Definitely, great.
Uh, great, so I think I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda, a second.
Okay.
No, nothing further for me.
Call for a vote.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Uh, aye, so the consent agenda is approved with just a few things noted verbally. Uh, and that is it, I think we have hit all items on the agenda. We can adjourn at eleven thirty-nine, thanks for an efficient meeting.
Thank you all.